Monday, June 13th, meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board to order with a moment of silent reflection, please. At this time, would may we ask Mrs. Calanti to call the roll call, please? Mrs. Fee? She's excused. Mr. Jeros?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Mufeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
Is there any comment at this time for a non-agenda item? If you have one, would you please step to the mic and give your name and address? Seeing none, may we move into the consent agenda? May we have, oh, excuse me, I need to do one thing before that. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff, members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regardless of non-agenda items this evening. May we have approval on the consent agenda, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
I'd like to ask one question, please.
Yes, please.
I received an email questioning the amount of grass that was going to be putting into Lincoln Playground. I'm not questioning a decision, but I wondered if we could just have a very brief explanation about how that was decided.
After we have the motion, then we'll ask for discussion. And we can do that, please. And Mrs. Mufeld is moving it?
Yes.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you like to raise your question at this time?
Yes, I would, please.
Okay.
I thought maybe that question was going to be raised. The, I've got a list here that kind of talks about some of the things that we are proposing to do with the Lincoln Playground. And just to back up a little bit, I met about a month and a half ago with Parent Teacher Organization Group at Lincoln. Dean Niemore put together a group to kind of coordinate the Lincoln interest in this project, and I worked through them. And what we tried to incorporate into this, from a facility standpoint, it's an asphalt replacement project. The asphalt was in terrible shape, and we've put back asphalt in a manner where it will hold up better to road-grade use because we do use it somewhat as a parking lot in the evenings because of the lack of parking in the neighborhood. So we've reinforced the asphalt so that it's more than playground grade, but parking lot grade. In addition to that, we're replacing concrete curving, we're putting new fencing in, we're addressing how waste is removed from the site so that the trucks don't have to come onto the playground, that they can come right up on worn and get at the dumpsters. We're doing some masonry repairs on the lower portion of the north unit. And we are bringing a ramp in from Milwaukee Avenue that's a little bit wider so that parents that are bringing strollers and so forth can access the playground close to the crosswalk at the southwest corner of the property. And now getting to Mr. Croner's question, there's four different things we're doing to try to soften the surface. One would be to add about roughly 300 square feet of wood fiber area so that the playground equipment area can be expanded in the future. Another thing we're doing is removing a cistern that's adjacent to the south side of the north unit, the older part of the building, that will give us about 600 square feet of space to put in landscaping in the future. We're also increasing the radius of some existing landscaping that's against the west side of the unit, the south unit, so that we can add about roughly 450 feet more green space along the building. And then back in the southwest corner, we're putting in roughly a 2,000-square-foot turf area so that a class could come out there and zip or whatnot. So we've added the green space in three different areas on the site to try to meet the needs of the excessive amount of asphalt that they have.
Thank you.
Do you have any further questions?
I do not.
Oh. Would anyone like to have any item on the consent agenda voted on separately? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Excuse me, we do have to have a, oh, sorry, thank you, Connie. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Connie, roll call vote, please. Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Mufeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Recognitions, please, Mary Jo.
Whitman Middle School, sixth grader Claire Honan recently captured first place in the Wisconsin Letters About Literature contest in the Level One category. She was honored last month at the Manasha Public Library in conjunction with the Fox Cities Book Festival. Her essay was entered in the National Letters About Literature competition. Longfellow Middle School's sixth grader Janet Fee placed second in the state in the Level One category. Longfellow Middle School's seventh graders Azie Hook, Michael Lonsky, Erica Belkey, Liam McMahon, Sebel Igaltu, Carmen Mufeld, Justice Hernday, Celia Ripple, Donovan McBride, Grace Pintar, Maggie French, and Vanessa Kohut were all named state semifinalists. Whitman Middle School's seventh graders Kira Olson, Ian Newton, Aubrianna Miro, Alec Lau, Dana Gertner, Jordan Pope, and Alex, excuse me, Alexis Zuda were also Wisconsin semifinalists. Letters About Literature is a national reading promotion program of the Center for the Book in the Library of Congress, presented in partnership with Target and affiliate state centers for the book. Students are invited to write a letter to the author of the book that has moved them most deeply, explaining their experience of the book and what it means for the rest of their lives.
Thank you. Any comment? We congratulate each one of these young people, and it's so rewarding to see the opportunities that our young people have and how they excel with these opportunities. So we, again, we congratulate each of them. Under action items, Mrs. Mufeld, would you read the action item, please?
Yes. It is recommended that the School Board approve the agreement reached with the Wauwatosa Educational Support Association, or WESA, on a financial response to the proposed state budget, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comment, please?
Mrs. Weber, if I can just?
Yes.
I think it's important to remind everybody, this is the last of our agreements that we've, with our associations, and this is one that necessarily, the state budget doesn't necessarily have an impact, or the state budget being passed in the next week and the Budget Repair Bill being included in that really doesn't have an impact. What we're doing here really is having a less expensive version of a contract that we've had, the contract runs through 2013, and I think this is just, our agreement is a way to have some cost reductions and allow us to meet our budget, which Mr. Mack is going to be going over a little bit later. So I think this is, it's not a situation that the Budget Repair Bill will necessarily have an impact. It is a response to our loss of revenue through the proposed state budget, which we believe is going to be passed in the next week or so.
Further comment or question, please? Is there a community comment, please, on the resolutions before us? Roll call vote? Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mufeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber? Yes. I need to comment once more. This is the fourth contract, as mentioned. But I would like to particularly compliment Mr. Mack and Dr. Erdl for the work that they have put in into settling these four contracts. It's, it puts our district in a very favorable place. I know some districts are suffering, and we thank you for what the two of you have done. And it's not minimizing the work of anyone else, but particularly Mr. Mack and Dr. Erdl lead the charge on this one. And then I'd like to, I forgot too earlier, but the check register is always here, and anyone who wishes to see it may please come up and view it. But that's always at the desk, and we, anyone who would like to look at it before consent agenda is approved is welcome to do so. Thank you. Business services, please. Mr. Mack? Oh, okay.
Thank you, Skip.
Oh, I'm sorry, the most important part.
Oh, geez, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. This evening, Jean Beeble is, as the English Language Arts Secondary Content Team Leader, is going to share with you realignment that was brought to the Curriculum Council. As, it does not involve any curricular changes, it is just a different way of delivering the English Language Arts curriculum. Jean's going to explain to you the rationale and what that might look like, and how next year we can possibly take some steps forward with doing this. So I'm going to let Jean explain this to you.
Hello, thank you. So we have been going through a number of changes and improvements in our curricular area, and it's been, I think, incredibly successful and well-received. There's been high student engagement, and we've implemented new resources. And while we've been reflecting and moving through our course offerings, we, through several discussions, realized that our English 11 course offering wasn't optimizing our instruction and student engagement. And so through a number of discussions, we were looking at, well, what is, what are some of the issues around English 11? English 11 has probably one of the higher failure, well, it does have the highest failure rate of any of our English classes. It also, students electing to go on to an AP class into their senior year is, excuse me, I think it's about 7% out of, out of the entire class. So we have 378 juniors this year, and only 28 opted to go into an AP class their senior year. So we were concerned that maybe there was a limited pathway to more rigor. And so really, it was after 10th grade, you were either going AP or not. And it was that or not that didn't really give kids a lot of options. And so we really wanted to look at, how are we aligning our curriculum, one, with our common core, and, two, ensuring that students have the opportunity and still feel well-prepared to go on to an AP course their senior year, if they so choose not to their junior year? A lot of things change in the course of a year, and a student coming out of 10th grade might feel a little bit intimidated by entering into an AP course, given their other enrollment options. And so we want to make sure their junior year still provides a lot of rigor for them. And so after a number of discussions, we decided that it would be a good idea to restructure our English 11 class. And so if you, and you have this handout, this is our current course offering, our sequence of courses. So after English 10, you'll see, whether you're in Advanced or English 10, you have three choices, AP Lit, AP Lang, or English 11. And those are your only choices. And then you do have other electives if there is room within your schedule. We want to provide more opportunities for kids, and so we have changed it. We're not changing the requirement, the number of English courses or semesters required, but after, after 10th grade, their choices would be optimized. You could still do AP Lit or Lang, but then you would have semester electives. And so the requirement, because we want to make sure that students are still receiving instruction on all of the benchmarks in writing and in literature, we don't want students to be able to navigate their way through their high school career without taking writing courses or writing-intensive courses for college. They would be required to take one semester, at least one semester, of an academic writing-focused course, which would be either Advanced Composition, Composition, or the Individual in Society. The Individual in Society is an offshoot of English 11. It is the writing component of English 11, but really focused explicitly on argumentation, but it would still be using the resources and addressing the same benchmarks. And then there is also the literary analysis focus, and so a student couldn't avoid literature. And so they would be required to take one of these courses, Brit Lit, or the Hero in Literature, which is the offshoot of English 11, and the Novel, which used to be just called Lit 12, but it would be changed to the Novel, but it would still be the same course, just to facilitate expanding the pool of who can enroll in the class, and then World Literature. The other electives would still remain the same, and as far as the creative writing course and the media communication, and the advanced communication courses are all English credits, those have not been changed. But a lot of times, depending on college enrollment, or I'm sorry, college applications, they might not see those as English credits, depending on where a media class would fall in their department. And so they might put it more in a communications department, so it wouldn't count as, say, an English credit. But that's the, that's the situation as it is now. So we would ensure through the way we've restructured it that students are still focused towards our core English benchmarks. So we have really just optimized student choices, which we think is a good thing. Instead of just defaulting into English 11, the students will have to really think about what they want to take. Giving them options will be a good thing. I think that will increase engagement in the coursework, and it's at no cost. It really is just a restructuring of our resources and where we teach things. So that is it in a nutshell. And to do it would require just the changing of course titles. And then this year, next year, English 11 will run, that's what was in our course catalog, and that is what we will have students enrolled in. But if it is something that you approve, we could use this coming year as a sort of pilot to look at having one semester as the Individual in Society, which focuses on argumentation writing, and then the other semester would be the Hero in Literature. And that would allow for us to pilot the course and make sure we were on track for our following year.
Are there any questions or comments, please? Mary Jo?
Sure. Could you, so, English 11, by that name would be gone?
Would be gone.
Okay. And what of these other alternatives most closely resembles that?
The two courses, the Individual in Society and the Hero in Literature. So they, I have the course overviews here and how they would be broken down. But essentially, the approach to teaching English in nine and 10 and 11, the way the courses stand now, is a very holistic approach in which reading literature, doing literary analysis, is very integrated. And so in nine and 10, that would still be the approach. And by breaking them into semester classes, we would allow for more flexibility in scheduling and provide a more writing-intensive course, where students could really focus on their academic writing. And then another course that would, the Hero in Literature, would really focus on literature and a literary analysis, which promotes logical reasoning.
And why do you think the failure rate for English 11 was higher than everything else?
Well, it's conjecture, and I feel as though there is a perception that, with students, that it's just the next step in their course, in their sequence of classes, and it's another thing that they are required to do. And so we really feel like one way to combat that is to give them the option to choose and say, well, hold on, we want you to look at what it is you're interested in and make your choices that way. I also think that there, there may be some perceptions on teacher part, where you fall into a routine and you start to think, well, these aren't the AP kids. And no one, I mean, that's a difficult conversation to have, it's a difficult thing to admit exists, but I'm sure, I'm not a teacher of English 11, but I will be next year, but I think just the history of it as being the very next step has kind of created the, you're an AP student or you're not. And so this would, I think, provide a middle-of-the-road, which would be better for students, instead of singling them out as, well, you're not ready for AP, your junior year, so you must not be an English person, which isn't true. As someone who teaches the honors course, I have students that come from, from English 11, who are strong writers, they're just maybe not into reading, you know? I don't want to listen to, you know, people talk about literature, for whatever reason. But I think it's a way to really give some power to the students to take ownership of their sequence of courses.
Okay, and I might have missed this, do some of these courses now qualify as English requirements and didn't before?
All of them do, no, they all do. Why I've separated, and I, just to explain why the creative writing and advanced communications and media classes aren't listed with the other academic courses, is that there's often a gray area in terms of whether or not those are considered English classes by colleges. And so whenever someone signs up for my media class, I always let them know, make sure that this isn't, you know, your last English class, that you need to be, you know, covered with your credits depending on the college you're going to. And those are discussions we have with guidance. So it's just the ins and outs of how you meet requirements for colleges.
And just one more, quick one. Is journalistic writing going away?
It is a name change. And so what we wanted to do, and this was kind of an add-on, and so I'm glad you asked that, journalistic writing wouldn't be going away, it would be churned into writing for publication. That title more, is more reflective of what actually happens in that class. It's not just a journalism class, but really, it's a class that feeds our student publications, whether it is the Student Yearbook, the Cardinal News, or literary magazines. And so it would just be more reflective of that. And journalistic writing was the case, we couldn't call it journalism because of licensing issues. And so we wanted to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Did you have a question?
Mr. Meyer?
It, just my editorial comment, it would be nice someday to see a theater history class. And please, are, is it possible to give the Board a list of, I mean, the reading lists? Could we see the reading lists?
Absolutely, we have them on our, on our website, on our course overviews.
But I mean consolidated, so we don't have to go, because the World Literature and the Hero in Literature and, and all of these, actually, I'm sure there's some things I haven't read, so I'd like to know what I should read.
And one thing that we are also hoping for, our Advanced Communications and Public Speaking is a course that really hasn't received enrollment in a number of years, primarily because of the requirements, and we hope that this is something that will rejuvenate some of our other electives, like the advanced communication theater setting and in public speaking. And I think all of us would agree that public speaking is vital to, to our world, so we're hoping that this, these new options will rejuvenate some of our classes that have not received a lot of interest.
And is, is World Literature a semester class?
So this would, these are all semester courses with the exception of our AP offerings. So it is our hope that once we do this, that we will see more students in their senior year opt for AP Lit or Lang, if they didn't choose to do so in their junior year.
Okay, and would, I don't expect an answer, but would any of these courses tell the students where my dog's name came from, Ibsen?
World Lit, I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
That's why I wanted, another reason to see reading lists. I have certain heroes that I would hope are there, but not my, not my decision. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there comments?
Yes.
Sharon?
I have a question on the GPA, and you mentioned honors course, and you also mentioned AP. What is the effect on our GPA? Does it, does it increase a student's GPA?
In terms of weighted grades?
We do not weight grades. And I'm going to say that if we did weight grades and students apply to colleges, they de-weight them as part of an admissions process. So colleges are much more interested in what courses you take and what the content of those courses are, and how previous students from our school district perform on their campus than they are in a weighting process. But colleges typically, not only do they de-weight, but they also eliminate courses that they don't see as contributing to an analysis of college-level coursework. So it's very difficult to predict that weighting grades has any advantage for students other than helping to sort and, you know, sort and select students that I think also is what that divide Jean is talking about, that there are the haves and the have-nots, and based on what someone might choose.
Right, well, I'm glad to hear that, because a lot of, you know, a lot of high schools are doing that, and their, you know, students' GPAs are well over four. So, okay, thanks.
Mr. Croner?
Thank you. I'm really pleased to see you expand the coursework in this week, because I think this is some of the most valuable teaching that goes on in the high schools, teaching writing skills and critical thinking skills. And I know some, some of the kids that I know have really advanced their thinking a lot of ways through some of these courses. I was concerned that, when you mentioned the high failure rate in English 11, and I'm glad that you mentioned both, that it could be due to student preparation and attitude, as well as the way the teachers approach the course. So I hope that you continue to have the hard conversations within the faculty as to what they can do to get the kids up to where they need to be, because I know that, you know, it's, it's a complex issue. But if the teachers aren't examining what they're doing and trying to make sure the kids get where they need to be, you know, the kids aren't going to have a really good chance. So I'm glad to see that you mentioned both sides of the issue, and I hope that your department continues to examine that.
And one way we are furthering that is bringing new teachers into the, the English 11 class, because it is always good to have fresh eyes on it, at both schools, it's not just my school.
I'm particularly interested and excited about the writing, because the young people that come back after the first year of being at college have said, oh, I wish I had more opportunities for writing, I really needed that. And so it's good to see that. And I'm hoping, there are young, some young people, when they are entering their junior year, they take a half a day, or they say they don't need to have anymore, and I always say, please, look at writing, you will need that, trust me. And so I hope they do, and so I'm real pleased that this is, the changes are coming forth. Again, it's serving the young people, so, thank you. Is there a community comment, please? Again, it's serving the young people. So, thank you. Is there a community comment, please? Dinga? Okay. Thank you very, very much for a very fine report. And now we can hear from Mr. Mack.
Thank you for putting me before.
Thank you. As you go through, may I just remind you, please refer to the pages as you go through.
I don't think the presentation necessarily aligns with the pages in the book.
Oh, okay. If they do, then please do. Thank you.
As I go through this, if you have any questions, as always, just stop me and ask. This budget still is not finalized, obviously, because of what's going on at a state level. And there was a lot of work put in by Dan, Human Resources, and Bill, and myself in getting the agreements done and finalized by the different units so that we could have a salary freeze. And I just want to acknowledge that because without that, this would have been very, very painful and difficult to balance this budget. And I think it's a credit to everybody that works in this district that they contributed to making this work. For basically the kids and keeping us financially stable as we move forward here. Start the tax levy. And I don't know exactly, I have to estimate the aid, but at this point, if you look at the bottom line, you're looking at a total of about forty-three million, six hundred thousand versus forty-three million, seven hundred thousand last year. It's about a decrease in total of about a hundred thousand dollars. The general fund, the non-referendum debt, and the capital expansion funds are all under the levy limit. We just choose, if you didn't use the capital expansion fund, or, and we don't have any debt anymore, you would just have a general fund levy. So those three numbers are really a combination that go together under the revenue limit. And you can see, obviously, the general fund is actually going up slightly, but the only reason that's happening is because of what I just explained, the non-referendum debt, because we paid off our debt. So that money just slides into the general fund then, which I had said last year because it would help balancing the budget this year. So that basically gave us almost three hundred thousand extra to balance this year because we paid the debt off. And then the capital expansion fund went down eighty thousand dollars, but we keep it around one point four million dollars. And that's simply all the projects that Mr. Johnson and takes care of with all of our major capital improvements for all of our buildings, just like he was explaining with the Lincoln asphalt and playground areas. And Recreation Department, the tax levy is going down slightly, just because program revenues are going up a little bit. If we look at the tax levy change, I kind of went through this already with you, with the general fund going up two hundred seventy-five thousand, the non-referendum debt going down two hundred eighty-one thousand, capital expansion down eighty thousand, and Recreation Department fourteen thousand. A total tax levy going down about a hundred thousand dollars, a point two-three percent. This is an estimate at this point. I hope that it'll be a little bit bigger, but I don't know because I have no idea with, remember that the aid that's going to be paid out is dependent on a budget that's being passed, number one. And number two, it's going to depend on all of everybody else's district in the state of Wisconsin spending. And those grants that were issued by the federal government is going to impact the aid. So I kind, hopefully, I went conservative on this. I'm pretty sure I did. So I still think the levy is going to go down next year. The only way the tax levy can move under the formulas are by these factors. The equalization aid going down two point four million will increase the levy actually five point four-nine percent. Chapter two twenty eight, because that program actually, and we're at the point where we can accept no longer, no longer accept new students, the levy is going to go up about seven hundred and twenty-four thousand or one point six-six percent. Computer aid is just a minor, minor thing, actually, the number's so small, has no effect on a levy. And then this is, when we look through this budget, this is where it gets a little bit different, because which you've never seen before, is that revenue cap decrease at five hundred and eighty-five per member for us, that's the five point five percent of the spending decrease that's under the current budget. Now, remember, the first line is the aid decrease. It goes hand in hand with that revenue cap decrease. So you're seeing where, basically at the state level, what they said is, okay, we're going to decrease aid, but we're going to also decrease the amount that you're able to spend. And that is how the state is balancing the budget. And basically what they're doing is, I don't know what's going to happen throughout the state, but I would say most tax levies throughout the whole state will probably end up going down a little bit, or up just slightly. It all depends where you are in the aid formula. Just graphically looking at it, and this includes Recreation Department, if you look over time, it's gone up, but that's primarily because state aid has gone down, and the revenue cap has gone up. Initially, you see, basically, the revenue cap was pulled way back, and aid has gone down, but the levy still, they pushed the spending back farther than what the aid is going to go down, so that we're having a slight levy decrease. Looking at that, just the district without the Recreation Department, almost the same look. It's going to be about from forty-three to forty-two nine, that's a one hundred thousand dollar difference. This picture shows it a lot more clearly as far as what's happening with the tax levy. Obviously, you can see going back in time that oh-five, oh-six was an election year, and it decreased. And normally, that pattern stayed true, except last year, we had a three point six-seven percent increase. Given the economy, that really wasn't that bad. Going into next year, it looks like we're going to have a tax levy decrease. And that, this, I like to point this out because this is very critical that people understand the difference between the nominal and the real tax levy. This shows you, and this goes back to nineteen eighty-eight. I don't, I, you know, it could go back a little bit farther if I went into the seventies, when they built, like, West High School in Eisenhower, the levy was even higher back then. But if you look at the trend on this levy, you could see, you know, obviously, people think in terms of the dollar of what it's worth every year, each, each, each year what it's worth. It doesn't take into consideration inflation. And so what I like to do is show that, and obviously, that shows that, yeah, our taxes are going up, 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 and up. But if you convert it to real dollars and you go back in time, now, this is showing it in two hundred and twelve, two oh-twelve dollars, and I estimate this, but given what inflation is, even that little thing, but if you go back in time, the real value of money, taxes were much higher back in the late eighties and the early nineties than they are now, much higher. And just so people have that awareness, I know people don't like, or they don't, they basically think year to year for the most part, but I think people need to understand that, that taxes really are comparatively a lot lower than they were in the past for the real value of what the dollar is worth. Property taxes and state resources. The reason this looks a little odd this year is simply because the revenue cap is going down. So the property tax piece of the total revenue stream is actually going up because aid is going way down. And it's a little bit contradictory, but actually, we're being, normally, those lines in a situation would either widen or a little bit, or come together. And in this situation, it's going a lot farther apart there on the property tax side, but actually, property taxes are coming down. And it's simply, again, because it, conceptually, I know it's a little bit more difficult to see, but they lowered the spending by five and a half percent. So the portion that taxes make up of your total revenues is going to seem bigger than it really was because your total pie shrunk. And on the state resource side, they're cutting aid, so your amount you're getting from your state is also going to be going down. The lines are actually spreading apart. But again, the reason that the state resource is coming down at the same time as your taxes are also going to go down is simply because they're reducing the state aid. It, it's a little bit, this is opposite of what normally happens every year. I don't know how to say it more clearly, except for just saying that. The general fund, the tax rate, and it's just assumed that the equalized value stays the same from this year to last year. The total tax rate will go down just slightly to eight dollars and thirty-eight cents per thousand. And you can see the different rates on the different funds. Actually, it's really primarily the general fund and the capital expansion fund that make up the total on the bottom. What does that mean for a house? Basically, it's the same amount of taxes as it was last year. It's such a minor, at this point in time for me to estimate, but a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home last year would have paid two thousand one hundred dollars, and this, next year, two thousand ninety-five. Now, remember again, this is based on equalized value, not on assessed value. If the assessed value of your house comes down in relation to your neighbors, your taxes will actually go down further. If your assessed value actually went up, then you're going to pay a little bit more taxes. But because what, it's good that just to compare each other on a statewide basis, they use an equalized value. Assessed value is local, and that's done by the city, and that's how the total tax levy is spread out in the city. It's by the assessed value, not by the equalized value. But in general, for most people, unless you've had your property reassessed this past year, you should see a slight decrease in the tax levy on the school side. Equalized value tax rate comparison, basically, just going down slightly from last year. And if you look over the past ten years, it's not too much different than it was back in oh-three, oh-four. That's the tax rate. The budget expenditures, and this you're going to see is going down on the next slide, but the net general fund is about sixty-four point seven million, special education fund, eleven point four million. We paid off our debt, so that's zero, and the capital expansion fund, one point four million. And our total expenditures in all are about eighty-one point three million. Recreation Department is relatively constant at one point five-seven million. Food service is about two point one million, pretty constant. And the donation fund fluctuates, but we budget about ninety thousand dollars in that fund. The changes in the budget expenditures. The net general fund is down almost four million dollars, five point seven-five percent. The special education fund down five hundred ninety-one thousand, almost five percent. The non-referendum debt fund is down almost three million or a hundred percent. And the capital expansion fund is done down four hundred fifty-seven thousand, or twenty-four percent. Total decrease is almost eight million dollars, a nine point three-one percent decrease of the funds under the revenue cap. Now, I got to explain some of this a little bit further on a slide coming up. Recreation Department is going up slightly, thirty-seven thousand five hundred, but that's offset actually by increased user fees. The food service fund is going up eleven thousand dollars at this point in time, and the donation fund, zero. And if you look at graphically, we go back in time in those oh-five, oh-six, oh-six, oh-seven. For those of you that don't remember, oh-five, oh-six, that's when we paid off the unfunded pension liability, where we paid an extra, almost eleven million dollars. So that's why you had the up and down in those two years. But you can see next year, the budget expenditures are going down the most we've seen probably ever. Looking at this on a breakout level of all the different objects, the primary objects in the budget salaries, forty-three point eight million, benefits, twenty point two, purchase services, eight million, non-capital objects, three point seven, capital objects, nine hundred thousand, insurance, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and other objects, about three hundred thousand dollars. And other objects is primarily, it's transit aid, which, I mean, special education aid has to go to another district, and it's user conferences and athletic participation fees. That's what's in the other objects. Salaries going down nine hundred thousand dollars, about two percent. Benefits down two and a half million or eleven percent. Purchase services down almost a million, almost eleven percent. Non-capital objects, a half a million dollars, down twelve percent. Capital objects down forty-one thousand, four percent. Debt retirement, almost three million, down a hundred percent. Insurance is going up a thousand dollars. And other objects are down forty-eight thousand or fourteen percent. And that's how the breakdown is between there. If you look at just graphically, again, salaries and benefits make up almost eighty-three percent of our budget. Purchase services, ten percent. Non-capital objects, four point seven-six. Capital objects, very small, one point one-six. And insurance, debt, and other objects, just one percent of the budget. If we look at each one of these items, I try to put in here what the main reasons are for going down. The nine hundred thousand dollars in salaries is about two percent decrease. It's simply all the salary and wage freezes that we put on in the district, and some staffing reductions. That's what makes that a negative going into next year. If you want to look at, this, this is kind of an odd thing, again, because of what's happening, but that little knock-up there, the salary is a percentage of the total budget. Remember that salaries are freezing, and the total budget is going down almost eight million dollars. That's why you see that the salaries are the percentage of the total budget going up. Never really happened this way before, but again, obviously, this has never happened before at a state level like it's happening this year. Benefits, if you don't, didn't know this, that there's two halves of the, two portions for the Wisconsin retirement system. The EE portion by ER means the employee portion, which formerly was played by the employer. That's going down two point, almost two point eight million or a hundred percent. That is now being paid for by the employees. And that's the reason the benefits are going down so much. The other thing to understand is, you can see that the portion was six point five percent, and the employer portion was five point one percent. And the reason there's a difference- And the reason there's a differential in between those two numbers is, it is actually, the employee portion is the same 5.1, but there's a benefit adjustment, which I believe goes to retired annuities. And on the employer's side, ours used to be higher by about 1 and 1/2 percent before we paid off the unfunded pension liability. After that was paid off, the employer piece dropped and actually has been saving us money every single year since we paid that off. But what they did in Madison, not everybody had paid everything off. And perhaps it was that, the idea of active people paying for a benefit adjustment of people retired. So, basically what WRS is now, when it happened under new law, it's just gonna be split evenly. And whatever the actuarial amount comes out to currently, it's 11.6 in total. So, it's gonna be 5.8 percent for each piece of the employer and employee under the Wisconsin retirement system. And when we changed our health plan to the high deductible health plan, by the way, that's why you see nothing on here in health insurance because basically health insurance is going down slightly. I didn't put the dollar amount here because it's small, but basically there is no increase. There would've been an increase probably of 7 or 8 percent. You see no increase in here for health insurance. Actually, the benefits are going down. And along with that change in health plans, we, the cash in lieu of was dropped from $270 per month to $200 per month. So, that's gonna save about 100 and, almost $108,000. And it's only available now to full-time employees. The benefit line hasn't changed that much. As a percentage of the total budget, it's going down slightly simply because you saw the negative 2, but it's not nearly as the size of the salary line. So, if you just look at benefits, the percentage of total budget, remember the budget again is going down almost $8 million. But the, the, the benefits are going down about 2 and 1/2 million. And percentage wise, it's almost the same. The benefits are going down a little bit more on a percentage basis. So, that's why that's staying fairly flat or just no diving a little bit. Salary to benefit ratio is definitely gonna go up and it's, and this hasn't happened in a while. That's because the benefits are going down. Benefit, because of the health insurance change and because of the Wisconsin retirement system, the employees paying half of it now and salaries staying same, that line is going to tilt upward. And it's, it's still not what it was back in 90, 95, but it definitely took a, a turn upward. Because, basically because benefits are decreasing. Purchase services, going down about $987,000. And this is primarily just capital projects in Fund 10 and 41. Basically going down 949,100 or 40 percent. I don't know if you remember, but last October, Fund 41, we carried over unfinished projects into this next year. That accounts for $377,000 of the drop. And we decreased the budget actually by 80,000. And then the other piece of why it's going down is actually a grant match that we put into the budget for one year. That was 492,000 and that is the security, primarily security cameras that are going in throughout the district. So, that will fall off. The non-capital objects are going down 508,000, about 12 percent. Non-capital equipment, going down 146,000. Textbooks, going down 134,000. Supplies, 158,000. And apparel, actually that apparel was the band uniforms that hadn't been paid for yet last June. They had, I had to carry that money over one more year. So, that was just money that was carried over from the previous budget year. But those are normal drops that you see at this point in time. Because a lot of the, like the capital equipment and supplies in the school budgets, they put that in there for their, with their carryover money that they have from year to year. Capital objects only went down $41,000 simply because it's a very small piece of our budget. The debt is down 2.957 million, almost $3 million. Remember, we paid that off ahead of time. And the reason we were able to do that is actually that money that we paid off the debt came from the job stimulus fund grant, which we used to pay teachers and then looped that money back in to pay off the debt. So, we took the one-time money, put it to a one-time use. And basically you freed up permanently probably $300,000 per year in perpetuity by doing that. The other objects are down about $48,000 or 14 percent. On the revenue side, property taxes, again, if you look at that, it's down about $100,000, 42.9 from almost 43 million. State sources are down quite a bit, almost $3 million. They're 23 million versus 26 million last year. Federal sources, down tremendously. And that's, that's 58.54 percent, but the number difference is really because the federal stimulus funds, all the grants are done now. That, that's all been used up. And the local source is down 6 percent. And I'll go through that in just a minute here. And playing where each one of those changes came from the property tax, 86,000 down, down 86,000. Point, negligible, negative 0.20, but it is negative. State sources down 3.1 million. Federal sources down 3.3 million. But that number, remember, we normally don't get that much money from the federal sources to begin with. So, that is a big number that it's going down. That was all the stimulus funds that came through the federal government. And the local sources are down 570,000 and that's primarily that COPS grant. So, you're looking at a revenue decrease of about 7.1 million or 8.45 percent. And if you look at the breakdown of the revenues, property taxes, 55.59 percent. Again, that's up compared to last year, but it's actually going down in real dollars the property taxes. It's just that because the budget is shrinking almost $8 million. State sources, almost 30 percent. Federal sources, 3 percent. Other local sources, about 11.42. Actually, this budget that we're going into this cycle now, if we continue in some reasonable, able manner going forward, this is kind of the breakdown that you'll see going forward on both sides, about revenues and expenses. The property taxes, I explained that with the levy, how, how that moved. The state sources, down 3.1 million. I have an estimate of losing 2.4 million on the inclusion aid. And a chapter 228 is going to be down, again, I don't know these numbers for sure. I have to estimate them at this point, about 724,000. We're down about 50 FTE from '09, '10 to '10, '11 membership. And that aid is figured on your leg with membership. So, we're going down from 284 to 234 in '10, '11 from '09, '10. And that's why the 228 is dropping. And that will continue to drop as we move forward. Under the federal sources, the 3.3 million. The federal job stimulus grant was about 2.35 million of that. And in Fund 27, the special education, ARAA, which is another federal stimulus grant, that's dropping off too, is about 900,000. The local revenues, down 570,000. The prior year uncollected taxes, which was from the city last year, down, that's down $127,000. That's also shows on the tax levy going down too. The COPS security grant, that we get the money via the police department. You saw the offset there in the expenditures, or that's just a plus and a minus in and out, that's a grant too. So, the total tax levy without the recreation department is going to be about 42.9, 42.9 million. The decrease about 86,000 or negative 0.2 percent. With the recreation department, 43,627,000 or, I should say decrease, I'm sorry. A decrease of $100,966 or minus 0.23 percent. And the total tax levy with the prior year chargebacks, I normally don't show that, but the only reason I do, did this year is because it was such a big number last year. The total decrease is 228,389. 7,916 should not be on there. It's going down with total tax levy about almost a half a percent. If we go to the Fund 50, food service, I just put this in here, it stays relatively stable. 211 to 212, 211, 12, it's going up just slightly right now, about $11,000. And it stayed around 2.1 million. If you look at where the money goes, we still have a portion of, I would say half the workers are still well-toothed, school district employees. So, we have salaries and benefits on our books. And then the primary purchase is the purchase service because Sedexo Food Services runs our program. The revenues in Fund 50, food sales, about $1.3 million, 63 percent of it. Federal aid is about 720,000 or 35.8 percent. State aid, 20,001 percent. And miscellaneous revenue, about $300. The recreation department is going up just slightly, about $35,000 or 2.44 percent. Staying pretty much the same. The breakdown for salaries and benefits is about 53, 54 percent in salaries, 10 percent in benefits. And purchase services, about 24 percent. And then there's some minor non-capital and capital spending there, 87,000 for non-capital and 86,000 for capital. Budget increase, 37,502. He's got salaries and benefits actually increasing slightly. And that could be because he has more programs in the recreation department. But he's offsetting them with fees and the, and I say he, I'm not sure, he is the director of recreation. And our non-personnel objects going up 3,506.67 percent, not much of a change. The tax levy, actually going down almost 15,000 or 2 percent for the recreation department. And that's a direct result of program revenue going up about 52,000 or 3.41 percent. And that's the end of the fiscal part of it. I'm gonna let Dr. Erdl speak to the impact of the budget on the educational process. And then if you have any questions, we can go from that point.
Thank you. So, what does 81 million dollars get us? And I think that's, that's really the critical question that we look at. And as challenging as what Mr. Mack just went over and talking about the largest reduction probably in the history, maybe one of the most challenging budgets the district has faced. I guess I look at this whole process for this coming year and I guess beyond optimistic and pretty excited about what we're doing with the money that we do have. When we look at the previous slide, which talked about our, our mission, our goals and our long-range plan. And that still is what drives it and what drives what we're trying to accomplish with the budget. I think all the budget numbers mean really nothing unless we're gonna improve student learning on a continuous basis. And that's really what we're trying to do. I'm gonna just kind of walk through and touch on some of the areas that I think are critical to our growth and, critical to our direction with our long-range plan and some of the efforts and implementations that we have for this coming year. The science review that we're starting out, one of the, the areas beyond just the consultants that we're gonna be using to help us. And that really comes out of our long-range plan about using people that have gone through it, using experts, experts in the field outside of just our, our K-12 arena and reviewing our entire science program. I think we know, most of us know that the science program has not been reviewed for well beyond 15 years. And we've, in our cycle, are now at the point where science is gonna be done. So, I think that is gonna be an exciting process. We know we have some issues in our high schools, our labs, and being able to look at those and working in conjunction with our review. So, I think we'll see some exciting changes coming out of our science program from the elementary level all the way up. Project Lead the Way, moving to the middle school and expanding in the middle school actually. Exciting, exciting changes with basically the STEM aspect of Project Lead the Way and our partnership that we've had with Project Lead the Way. Mr. Anderson has been leading that effort for the district. And we, the number of kids we have continue to grow in those programs and the training for our teachers and getting us up to speed with, with Project Lead the Way. And the feedback has been good from students and from parents and students taking those classes. The one concern is how do we get more students to do it within our middle school schedule? And I'll touch on that a little bit later. The elementary social studies adoption being implemented. While the materials may have been purchased out of this, this current year's budget, the process to implement those in the student learning office today is a huge number of big boxes. And to actually have that turn into something in the classroom, there's a lot of work that's gonna go in it through our teachers, our principals, and in particular through student learning. I think we're gonna see some really exciting lessons and exciting learning taking place in our social studies program at the elementary level. We continue to grow the summer school opportunities. One example, we have 82 students taking an online econ course. We just continue to grow more and more opportunities for summer school. And we're finally moving away from, I think, the culture and the, the belief that summer school is just enrichment. And it's not about opportunities to expand and grow beyond, in particular at the high school level. So, we're moving, where more and more classes for credit are being offered, more and more students are taking those courses and really challenging themselves in the summer. And hopefully, my goal is at some point, we move beyond the point where summer is a break and learning continues all year round because we know that there's a, there's a lapse that takes place over summers, over summer for some students and they kind of step back. So, we continue to grow those. And financially, that actually benefits the district in how we do it. And we're able to do it without charging fees. And I think it's appreciated by our, our parents and our students. The elementary Spanish program, our teachers have been hired and the curriculum is being developed. And that program will start day one at the elementary level, starting this year. We continue to grow our AP course offerings. The board has approved several of those in the past couple of months. And we know that's one of the goals of the district, to increase the number of students taking AP courses. The district was recognized for our efforts with AP coursework as well. Revamping the library of media services and the curriculum. Lesson plans are being developed that'll be carried out by classroom teachers and by aides in the, in the library. An example is, EFW gave a grant to the, actually Jamie Price wrote the grant, for a portable media station that'll be in each elementary library. And we continue to work through the development and making sure we're prepared for the start of the school year with our library media services. Not only having the services that have been there, but additional opportunities in, in the libraries. In technology, we're moving further toward that cloud vision. Mr. Price has talked about that. That's also part of our long-range plan. The Google Docs is an area that we're trying to expand into. We also have a Blackboard learning. And the, the big switch is moving away from groupwise into Gmail, which will be a challenge this summer. So, everybody is gonna need to learn a different platform. But I think that expands the use of not just email, but the whole Google type system and helps reduce our costs. We're able to put the money in other areas. Also, we are gonna be offering four hybrid classes at the high school next year. And one in the history area, one in English at each of our high schools. And that'll be a combination of online learning as well as face-to-face And that'll be a combination of online learning as well as face-to-face learning. And I, I guess I wouldn't call it a pilot. I would call it is a step in the direction that we're gonna be going more so in the future. Because that clearly is a learning that, that takes place certainly outside of K-12 and what we need to prepare our students for. So we have those taking place and our budget is certainly supporting that type of staffing and that type of, of learning for our students. And they're actually planning a report to the board on that initiative later in the summer. Our mobility effort for high school and middle school students, which the purchase of the iPads and the continual applications and training for our students and our staff on helping our students making, learning more powerful through the use of iPads. And I don't think it's just gonna stop, I know it's not gonna just stop at our iPads. Part of the hybrid class as well is having students come into the school while they, they might not be in session, but they're doing their learning on their own laptops or other district provided laptops or resources as well. Our school's security system, that's being put in place, the monitoring of the system and how that all operates, the cameras should be up and running by the beginning of the school year. The entry systems with a card access will significantly streamline our operations and help with the reduction of the keys that Mr. Johnson has a lot of fun with, dealing with those. But I think that's gonna help streamline our operations as well. Also looking at a document storage solution for HR and moving in that direction, which instead of all the file cabinets full of records and having secure access and online access and immediate access certainly will streamline operations. Moving toward a new evaluation system or evaluation methods that can be done online as principals can go through classrooms, document what they're seeing and moving that process forward as well. Also at the next board meeting, we'll have a presentation from a company called Advanced Academics that we've been dealing with administratively and a consideration of a virtual school. We have approximately twenty to twenty-five students that are applying outside of the district for, for virtual school operations or for virtual school programs. We believe we can offer them something in district so they don't leave. And that, that's what the presentation is gonna be. But then also consideration of whether or not we wanna pursue being a statewide virtual school and trying to find a way to offer online classes as well for our students that are currently in the district. We know we have students every year that come about that could benefit from an online program, whether they have medical issues, whatever the other types of learning, issues or different ways of learning that that would benefit them. So we'll have more information coming on that. Our Montessori school is opening with three sections. There's been a large response to the Montessori school. The teachers have been hired. Actually, they had meetings today and this evening and get to meet the teachers. Mr. Hoise has been working, Mr. Hoyne has been working, Hoise.
Hoise.
I've been dealing with both of them a lot lately, anyway. Dean Hoise has been working tirelessly with those teachers and with that program. And we hear the construction through the floor on a daily basis as the classrooms are, are being developed. So very exciting opportunity for our school district and our students in it. Increased use of data through data warehouse and data analyst. John Shigall has, is on board. And I can speak to a discussion I had today with Mrs. Aronberger about some of the data that he has already put together. That I can see that that position is really gonna drive some significant changes in our district in how we deploy staff and how we look at interventions for students and how we can target students that are struggling, students that are above and beyond. So I think certainly early on in the beginning of the year, we'll be able to share more information with the board on the work that he is doing and as well as the development of the data warehouse. Our map assessment being further developed. We have three pretty good years of, of map data. And when we were able to look at longitudinal data, we're able to make better decisions and good decisions with our map assessments. And I think we're gonna be moving further with our, our kindergarten students on getting some better data. So we continue to grow with the use of map and, and how we, not just having kids take the test, but how we use that data. And they'll be, on the district development plan, I think you'll see the results, the actual numbers on a three-year basis. We have improved the numbers of students meeting expected growth each and every year. So there's progress and I think we're seeing some, some fruits of that labor. The continued study and recommendation for potential secondary schedule changes. I intend to have a recommendation to the school board for the following year for our secondary schools, two middle schools and two high schools, looking at what's gonna best meet the needs of our students. We continue to have challenges at the middle school and high school and getting, I guess simply put, meeting the needs of a changing school district, a changing curriculum and changing needs for our students. And I think if we're gonna, if we want our students to access rigor, we have to make some of those changes. And we can't let conflicts get in the way of opportunities for students. So that group has been studying for this past year. This Friday, they're meeting with a national expert that has a lot of experience, Michael Reddick. And we'll continue to have that moving toward bringing a recommendation to the school board. We're working with Tom Guski, who's a national expert on grading practices. It's kind of the next step in our building leadership team model and how we're looking at what we're doing with grades, what does grading mean? Those are really tough discussions, but I think it's, we've, we've kind of moved to that next step of really deciding what grades are meant to be and what they're meant to do. So we're gonna be starting that. We have him as our opening day in-service trainer. A group of people also are going in the next week to, to listen to him. And some of that will carry through in, in our building leadership team model. We continue with our PLC weekly time. I think it's important to point out that when that was initiated, the, the perception, and I think we put good information out and shared what the change was and the total number of minutes instruction, of instruction that did not change for the, the release time. I think if you, if you look at the professional learning community's model and what we're trying to accomplish during that time, the use of, of data, the formative assessment piece and, and now the next step of looking at grades, that time is critical to, to the growth of our staff and ultimately change in instruction improvement for students. When we actually did that, we added two instructional days to the calendar. And also, as we were going through the calendar, we recognized that two days for teacher conferences were being counted that should not have been counted. So when we made that switch, the, the ultimate goal is we did add minutes, but I don't look at that as a major piece. But I think the, the critical piece when we did switch to that is we added four instructional days to the, to the teaching calendar because we were not actually having the full number. I believe it was four years ago. The investment in that time is a lot of training and staff development to make sure that time is being used wisely through our staff and through our principals. Our building leadership team model for professional development, some of that is, is costs for staff time. But I think if there's one thing we can point to in the past three years of improvement in our district and, and true staff development, embedded staff development has been our building leadership team model. And that's where teams of teachers and administrators from each building, actually, we generally meet in this room on a secondary basis and an elementary basis on two different days. And the next two days, we have those meetings coming, working with Eric Twiddell again. But I think when those teachers go out to the buildings and it's different, the implementation at, at different buildings varies a little bit. But I think if you talk to each of the buildings, it's been a positive change and we're gonna continue to grow that. Continued class sizes, there's a small class sizes. Oftentimes, and I think a lot of the research that is coming out, that you can look at class size in several different ways. When you look at the levels of students in classes and which ones can handle larger classes and, and how you work through that. I think when you, you winnow it down to the fact of, okay, let's just look at what are our average class sizes. And I think our, our class sizes compared to a lot of our neighbors, compared to statewide and as well as national averages as well, we're in the neighborhood of, of twenty-two students per teacher for our elementary level. And that varies each week when we do staff enrollment changes. So we can calculate it on a weekly basis and it changes back and forth. But it's somewhere in the neighborhood of, of twenty-two students. And I, I think those are very reasonable and very good class sizes and offers opportunity for more individual, individualized attention. At the secondary level, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, in that range. Obviously, with that, that being the average, some classes are a little bit smaller, some are gonna be larger. And I think moving down the road, some decisions are gonna have to be made that are gonna have, some of our classes are gonna be larger and some are gonna be smaller. But I think we can make determinations based on some data that we have and some research and really try to figure out the best way to manage that. Our plan in the Explorer Test, which is the next, the precursors to the ACT, those have been issued. And we'll continue with that program for next year, which will give us additional data for the success of our students as well. And we continue to support our diversity, long-range plan. And our team continues to do work. We also had a group this year that had met with the representative from the Department of Justice called our Spirit Group, which is a diverse group of students from East and West High School. And we recently met with them again. And it's interesting that one of the pieces that came out is the, the most powerful piece out of that group was being able to communicate, communicate with, with the teachers directly from student voices. So that's gonna carry us forward a little bit more. I think that's a pretty powerful group of students. They have some great ideas as how we, how we can accomplish more initiatives in that area, moving down the road. Like I said, I think it's, it's interesting in looking at this budget process. Since nineteen ninety-three, districts have been under revenue caps and have been forced to work in ways that are different. Been forced to work in ways without increasing revenue to match expenditures. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that over, over the time. I think this has been an extreme challenge. I'm, I'm very proud of the work of, of our school district. I'm proud of our, our employees to step up because all of these things would not be possible if we weren't able to get those, those type of concessions. And I know it's challenging, I know it's hard. But when you look at what we're able to do and how we're able to move forward this year and what we intend to do in the future without being able to work through those things, we're not gonna be able to move forward with some of those areas that I just talked about. And these are areas that we need to prepare our students for, what their future is gonna be and not what we're sitting at right now. So, thank you.
Questions please or comments on the budget presentation? Mrs. Muilfeld?
Thank you. All I have to say is this has been a very, very tough process. It's, it's been phenomenal again, the support we've had from our staff all through a lot of the external pressures that we've had with the state. And, and all of our employees have acted very professionally through this difficult process. I, I, I support this proposed budget. Unfortunately, I cannot attend the June twenty-seventh meeting due to a prior out-of-town commitment. But I do support the budget and acknowledge the, the difficult situation we're in and the work that has been done by the entire district in support of the kids.
Further questions? Are there any further questions by the board?
Yeah, but a million.
I have one please before we ask for community. Do you have any idea at what meeting the secondary schedule report will come? Do you have some estimate of when that meeting will be?
No.
Okay.
But I will, September is my, my target, September, October. Because once we move into that process, there's a lot of planning that would have to take place to make any changes that we would be looking at.
And before we open to the public, what is the date that the budget will be presented to the community for, that we will be voting on this budget?
June twenty-seventh.
Okay, thank you. If we can keep repeating that so that everyone knows that date. Is there a comment from the community on the budget, budget presentation? And would you mind giving your name and address, please?
Ilya Potkonyak, eighty-nine oh five Jackson Park Boulevard, Waluata, five-three-two-two-six. I read the agenda and I've seen four different contracts have changed for the different groups, union groups. What type of concessions and rollbacks have the principals, the school districts, employees, what have they done? Non-union represented, what, what kind of concessions have they done and what kind of rollbacks as far as pay have they conceded to? That's my only question.
It's not in the agenda or in the budget.
It was, it was shared by Mr. Mack earlier that all employees in the district are taking a pay freeze. All employees are moving to the insurance plan, new insurance plan, and all employees will be paying the five point eight percent for their retirement.
Are there any further questions? Okay, Mr. Meyer?
I'm, I'm sorry, I should have said this before, but we are operating in a manner where we will have, we know we will have less money. But that does not mean we will not do anything new. We will do new things. We have a superintendent who is always doing new things. And that will mean we will have to make shrewd and difficult choices. There will be some things we will have to stop doing. To not do anything new means we would be stagnant. And we are, are, we are an educational organization. We cannot be stagnant. We will do new things. I'm, I'm assuming, is that a safe, a safe bet?
It's a fair bet.
There's a fair bet. So there will be some difficult moments over the course of the next year as choices are made. Because with less money, especially with less money, doing something new means that we need to stop doing something old. Not that old is bad and new is good, but as I said, we are an educational institution and by definition, we grow and, and move.
Thank you. Yes, Mary Jo?
I, you know, I, I do have to echo Mrs. Weber and Mrs. Muilfeld's comments regarding all of our employees. And, and just to give a little bit more detail, we had two of our groups actually had settled contracts that were, would have been in effect through twenty thirteen. And they accepted the frees and the changes, didn't have to. Our teachers expired, contract expired at the end of June or will expire at the end of June. And currently, they could have requested to open bargaining. And our other, our fourth one, we are in the process of negotiating with. And what we were talking about before is nothing, nothing like what they ended up having. So again, I, I think it's important. For a while there, I was feeling like, you know, there was a lot of talk about local control. And, and I was feeling like we had less local control than ever. But I think the leadership in the district, and it is Dr. Erdl, it's Mr. Mack, it's Mr. Chanan and our other directors who have taken this and made it, you know, an opportunity, a challenge and an opportunity. And, and Mr. Meyer, you're right, you know, the harder things are coming, although, you know, we had a couple this year already. You know, with the implementation of the world language program. But as long as we keep our focus on those desks in the classroom and those little bodies that are in them, I think that, that will be okay. So again, I, I don't think you can say enough about our employees, about our leadership. Thank you to everybody. And, and you know, if you talk to people in other districts, other communities, this is not happening in a lot of places. People just simply don't know what to do. You know, they're taking easy, cut, 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 whatever. So I, I think we're really fortunate. And can I add something a little bit off topic here?
Yes.
Slightly. And Mr. Corner, I'll ask you if you maybe wanna join in. But I attended the first graduating class of the Trades Charter School on Friday. Eight young men that were just really interesting, really praised for their hard work and their commitment. And it was really a neat experience. They were greatly supported, lots of family with each one of them. And so that is a huge milestone in, in our first, or our second chartered school, I should say. And I know Mr. Gerosi- And I know Mr. Gerosi, you were part of that implementation, but it was, it was a great evening, and the way that the teachers knew these kids, the instructors from the different trade unions really knew each one of them. And you could tell some of these kids were struggling before, and they found a place and they found success, so.
Mr. Kroner, do you have wish to add on?
Yeah, I guess I can. I was at the trade school graduation as well. It was a very enjoyable experience. It seemed very meaningful for the families and the eight graduates. Students were, it actually, it actually took place in this room. The students occupied these chairs, and the teachers spoke about each of the students, and the entire ceremony focused on the students for the whole time, and they were quite thrilled to be here and quite thrilled to graduate as are all high school graduates. And so it appeared it was a very meaningful program for them, and that they were very happy with their experience here. I was also at the graduation at Tosa East, and those graduates were also equally thrilled to be graduating from high school. And in these times, we're often, you know, with budgets and things, we're focused on the difficult decisions, but with graduation, it was a very enjoyable weekend, and there was plenty of good feeling in Wauwatosa regarding the schools as far as the graduates were concerned, so.
Anyone else? I'd like to follow through just one minute on Mr. Mack. A lot of thank yous and recognitions have been given this evening, and you touched on it just a little bit. Every single employee in this district, whether it's in the maintenance, whether it's a secretary, an aide, every single employee in the district has continued to the success of where we are today in our budget, our planning. So many thank yous, but I want to be sure that each and every one realizes that we are appreciative of the work that they are doing. Seeing no other comments on the budget presentation, may we move to the superintendent's agenda, portion of the budget, of the agenda?
Thank you. Recently, there was a couple of, I don't know if I, situations that have occurred that regarding pedestrian bike safety, or a couple of emails from Mrs. Johnson, Mrs. Worley, talking about bike safety, pedestrian safety, and I think that got me thinking a little bit, and I know their email addressed also the east-west boundary issue, but looking at the bike safety, and then we had an incident that occurred that reminded me of where my kids go to school and where the traffic has become a situation where we have some significant hazards. And it resolves, I think every school has some issues, and I think Roosevelt has tried to address their traffic issues in some ways. Every school underwood has a new drive-in procedure, and I think we have more and more people that are driving their kids to school for various reasons. And I think the area by Eisenhower, West, and Whitman has become a real problem. And we had, I think it reached a difficult point a couple of weeks ago when a very young student was crossing the street and was hit by a car. Fortunately, she was not, the car was going fairly slow, and fortunately, she was not severely injured, but I guess I'm at the point where I'm done waiting for something really bad to happen. And I've been in discussions, Jim Arshambo, we've contacted, contacted each other shortly after this, I know his kids go to Eisenhower as well, and we started talking, we're going to get together and really look at that area, and whether we, certainly we have to have another crosswalk put in there. There's discussions, do we need sidewalks on both sides of the street? I think a car-vault lane like we have in front of Whitman would be a way to help do something with the traffic. So we're going to have to look at some different options, and I think it's no parking along one side, I don't know whether or not that's enforced on the south side of center. But also the other issue too of, and I think our two parents are concerned about getting more kids active and riding bikes, walking to school, and I think we are a walking district. My concern is not a lot of kids are walking or riding their bikes, and I think part of it is because they don't feel safe. Part of it, there's societal reasons as well that hopefully we can try to address too, but the concept of McKinley kids and that their traffic pattern to get over to Whitman and get over to West if they do choose to walk or do choose to ride bike, and that's part of my discussion with city administrator Arshambo, and really looking at different ways. I know there's a group, say, at McKinley working on the safe routes to school, and I think that might be geared more toward the McKinley area, but I think trying to address ways of increasing safety, which I think ultimately will increase more students walking, more students taking their bikes to school. And I think we have a lot of, I guess I would look at it and say unsafe crossings in our district, but I think that route probably has the most significant ones and the biggest challenges for a larger, larger number of students. So I just wanted to let people know that we are working on it and will be working with parents and trying to address those safety issues as well. Couple of other issues, the Family Engagement Survey, everybody should have gotten a couple of, I guess they're being called Global Calls now, but a couple of reminders through voicemail and also through email about an engagement survey that we started undertaking this year and kind of as a baseline that we'll try to do on a yearly basis to really find out if we're making any growth in that areas. There'll be a report that I'll have and share with the board. I think we have close to 1,000 responses already, which compared to six years ago, when we had, we paid somebody to School Perceptions to do a survey, I know we didn't get that, we had a, like I think a 10 or 9% response rate. So we're getting good responses, we're getting some good information. I've read through many of the comments, there's some very good comments, some very critical comments, and I think those are the type of things that will help us grow and get better. So I would encourage parents that might be hearing this message or to take that survey and give your honest feedback, because it only helps make us get better. And the last issue, I'm going to let Ms. Muilfeld just comment on, she had been contacted by WASB to serve on Policy and Resolutions Committee as she did last year, and I'll let her share a little bit more about that.
Yes, I did, as the board is aware, I did serve as Region 15 Representative on the WASB Policy and Resolutions Committee, and our regional director, Jim Long, asked if I, as a school board member or another school board member from Wauwatosa, would like to serve on the committee again this year. Generally, it's a two-year, it's a two-year transition for each school district, I should say, as the regional representative, and this would then be Wauwatosa's second year. There is also another Region 15 District, Brown Deer. There's usually two school districts per region, and there are 15 regions in the WASB, so. As you are aware, the WASB is, Wisconsin Association of School Boards is really the only place that a school board can have a voice as a collective body of the 425 school districts in Wisconsin as a collective voice. And it's my understanding that we are still pursuing our membership with WASB unless there's some information that I don't know about, so.
I think that'll have to be a discussion with the board as well.
Okay. So, so the request came to me, I indicated to Jim that I need to bring this back to the board per our policy, and so it's here before you tonight so that WASB can choose another school district to represent, Region 15, if our board is not comfortable doing that.
And is there a deadline when you must reply?
Well, he wants to know as soon as possible so he can search for another school board member from another district to serve.
Okay.
In the region.
There are three items that the superintendent has presented to us, and could we take them individually, please, with your permission? I'd like to take the pedestrian bike safety first. Board members, do you have any questions or comments on that one? Yes, Mr. Kroner?
Thank you. Dr. Erdl, I know there might be some immediate safety issues that can be addressed pretty quickly, but is it, would it be worthwhile to have a more in-depth analysis of safety and student travel in the district? Maybe form a larger committee with representatives from the different schools that could go back to the PTAs and talk to parents and maybe, you know, spend it six to nine months analyzing the different schools just to see if there are other issues out there that haven't really been brought to the forefront that maybe over one or two or year period we could look at and, you know, make more corrections throughout the district?
Yeah, I think that's worthy of a discussion. I would say I would ask our Transportation Director to look into it, but we don't have one. So I'm just thinking through my mind of how we would, where we'd go with that, but I'm sure the city would be willing to work with us and look at the traffic, and I think that's an opportunity to work with the city on something, and Mr. Johnson generally, no, I'm just kidding, Mr. Johnson. But I think, I think it's a worthwhile piece, because I do think we have numerous areas and I think it's a concern.
Mrs. Brandl?
Is the Safe Routes to School Grant, is that still, is that an ongoing program? Okay, you're smiling. You must have looked into that.
I'll let Mrs. Wayne Scott comment.
Oh, okay.
Do that grant every two years so we can apply for the grant again in 2012 if we decide to do so. But we'd have to do some research before we apply for the grant, and you do do it as a partnership with the police department and the city.
Okay. Because that would seem like a good route to take, so.
Board members, further comment? I'd like to speak to it also, please. The thing that has impressed me the most this last year particularly are the principals, the newsletters that we do receive, they have worked very, very hard. I think of Lincoln and Eisenhower. The principals have had some excellent letters begging the parents to follow the guidelines that have been established, so, and I commend Mr. Kroner for his suggestion of involving parents. I think we need to get the parents, I don't think we can say it enough, that we cannot solve all the problems as a school district. The community must be a part of it in helping their children cross at the right places. We come past Whitman and it's, oh, it's so scary, we avoid that area at 3 o'clock because the young people are running out in the middle of the street, the buses are waiting, and so I think we have to look at all of those. And then it's wisely pointed out, Mr. Kroner, you said there's some more immediate changes, and we'll, I'm, I trust Dr. Erdl, we'll put that into place as quickly as possible, those, I'll say the simple solutions, but there's greater depth that cannot perhaps be settled immediately, and that's where you come in. You spoke of speaking with our, Mr. Arshambo, so thank you for that responding, and I know the parents, I hoping, I know two of them are here this evening, I hope they might speak to this and add anything they wish to. Is there any comment from the community, please?
Cindy Wyland Worley, 2658 Pasadena Boulevard. Really, I didn't come to speak tonight, I came to listen, but I would like to just emphasize the importance it is to have, have a community where kids do feel safe to walk or ride their bikes to school. I think it just makes it such a better community, and it encourages these kids to be part of this community, not disassociate themselves with it, but be part of the neighborhoods, make those neighborhoods stronger, make that a more welcoming place for people to move to. I think it says a lot about a community if you see the kids out there walking to and from school. Not only that, it also produces healthier kids, kids that I think will want to stay here, and wouldn't we want our educated kids to be the ones that are our future residents, since we're working so hard to educate them? I just would really like to see it be looked upon, that how can we make this a district where all kids can walk to the school that's closest to them? Because, you know, you're right, not many kids walk today, and parents come up with all sorts of excuses why there's no time for them to walk, and why I have to drop them off today, and some do, I'm not saying it's possible for everybody. I just think though, if we're in a community where a lot more kids are walking, even parents who are going to work can feel comfortable that their child is walking to school and getting there safely, and not feeling like they have to drop them off and make sure they're there. If they're all doing this, you're a lot more comfortable saying, I'm going to work and you're going to school, and they walk out the door at the same time, and they don't have to be driven. It's just, I'd like to see it happen, I'd like to see it continue, and right now with the McKinley District, you know, we get to middle school and we're already making that decision. My son's going into sixth grade next year, you know, all his friends are going to Whitman, and I struggle. I'd really like to see him walk to school, but at the same time, I'm being forced to drive my daughter to West, so I'm having a hard time convincing him, you should walk to Longfellow apart from your friends, when I have to drive that way anyways. Whereas I'd also like to just let my daughter walk to East, which she could do, but walking to West and Whitman, it's just not a safer, convenient way for them to do that. I'm not even talking the mileage, it's just, it's not convenient, and I would worry. I wouldn't feel comfortable leaving for work knowing they're about to go a walk down Burleigh or North Avenue and then cross, cross over Highway 100. So I hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Johnson, I live at 2283 Luddington Avenue in Wauwatosa, and I wanted to reiterate, I'm so grateful that the board is addressing this issue and that they're addressing it quickly, because I was surprised, I didn't realize how unsafe it was. I heard from parents at McKinley that said, that took their kids to Whitman. My son is going to walk to Longfellow because he can walk. And how, but I, when I was there, I was, I just couldn't believe how unsafe it was for our kids, and so I'm glad that we're looking into it, and I very much appreciate that you're doing that. I also, as it was said before, that, you know, we want more opportunities for our kids, we want to optimize student choice, and I think one of those important choices is that kids have a choice that they can walk or bike to school, because right now, children from the McKinley area that need to go the other end, obviously even Eisenhower, you said, you know, there's the elementary school there as well, they don't really have a choice to walk or ride their bike. I've talked to, since I, my bubble of disillusionment has been burst, and I realized kids can't walk or bike there, I talked to many other McKinley families that take, that drive their kids, and they said, well, of course our kids don't ride their bike, it's dangerous, it's hazardous. And so I just want to stress the importance that, that we give our, all of our students opportunities and choices to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Ilya Potkonyak, I've been, I drove my daughters to Whitman and West for seven years, and I was complaining about it for those seven years, so I'm glad to see something's, it's finally being addressed, because it was, it was harrowing. It was absolutely harrowing, and that I'm glad to see something's finally being done. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further comments on this, may we, is there anything on the survey that anyone wishes to speak to? Anyone from the community? It's real encouraging to see the percent of response that you have had already. I think that's great, and you'll keep us informed on. Will you give us, are there, I haven't taken the survey, but are there, is there a space for comments that people can bring to our attention that perhaps is not on the survey?
There is, and also if they'd like a paper copy, they can pick one up here or at any of the schools to do that, but there is an area for comments. And Mrs. Wayne Scott is the one that has been doggedly moving this forward, so.
Good, thank you, Laura. May we speak to the Policy and Resolutions, Mrs. Muilfeld's report? Yes, Mr. Meyer?
A couple of times I've served as the, our delegate to the state convention, and reviewing the resolutions as a delegate, I would consult with Dr. Erdl, and the other person with whom there was consultation was with Mr. Mack, because above all things, the resolutions concerned financial questions. Not everything, but it, it was the case that the big impact items were financial items. Not everything, but it, it was the case that the big impact items were financial items. Therefore, my thinking would be that whomever would serve in this role should be of a financial inclination of some sort. Because those, those are the kinds of issues, especially this year, that are the hot issues. The second consideration I think we should put out is that Mrs. Mufeld has been very active with CISA, and was a voting delegate for CISA, I believe, the Board of Control, this past year. Do I have that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the idea that this, these two roles could be represented by a single person starts to be a stretch, because the, the interests of CISA and all of the other school districts other than Wauwatosa in our CISA district are not necessarily in alignment with what the interests of the Wauwatosa School District would be with WASB. And that, to me, kind of points to that it would be appropriate to have someone other than Mrs. Mufeld, not because of Mrs. Mufeld's qualifications, but just because it, it would seem to be a good idea to put two people in the room or on these issues as opposed to one. A third area we need to talk about is the M A T C representation that we do. And so, similarly, we're sending these emissaries out, and I believe as a board, we should look at it as a coordinated effort, rather than a one here, one there independent effort. And then, I guess I'm, I'm frustrated with WASB here, because one of the reasons we participate is a learning experience about governance, that WASB will teach us something. And it just seems to me that WASB should understand the governance idea that to reach out to the Wauwatosa School Board would mean you call the president of the Wauwatosa School Board. That the direct invitations to individual members without going through the board president doesn't seem to me to be respectful of good government, of good governance practices. So, when we have a chance, I, I think we should communicate, if the board would agree, that, you know, communications from WASB to the board about any new matter or renewal of any matter should go through the superintendent or through the board president, and not individually approaching board members. Because as we know, all of us individually have no authority, which is why Sharon brought it here, of course. So, that's just what I think. I, I would like to see, you know, CISA and WASB and M A T C and our roles with them be somehow separate, yet somehow coordinated, so that we put out a consistent message to these various groups.
Further comment, please, Mary Jo?
Rather than speak to who we should, how we should do it, I, and I've said this before, WASB, this effort by WASB is basically lobbying. And to bring all these districts together and assume that everybody wants the same end, we, we saw last year that some people wanted some changes in open enrollment, some didn't. You know, I, I just, I'm not sure it's, you know, worth it. When you look at, you know, the lobbying groups on the website, you know, we, we sometimes have a teachers' union lobbying one way, and the WASB lobbying another way, and the superintendent's group lobbying in another way, all on the same matter. So, for me, I, you know, I'm not sure it's, it's a good use of our time. If, you know, if, if the board as a whole agrees that it is, Sharon, do you like solicit then from us before you go, or where, how do things get to the table there?
Every school board submits resolutions per the timeline set per WASB. And based on that, the staff at WASB then compiles all those resolutions for the 30, assuming all 30 spots are represented in the regions for that larger group. And the group then goes through an exercise of comparing the resolutions to what has been currently adopted with the WASB resolution process. It's a, it's sort of a rolling process. No resolutions are ever discarded unless the membership at the delegate assembly every year in January discards them, or votes something new, or changes a resolution. So, so basically, the work is done just to compare them, to try to bring to the delegate assembly resolutions that are general enough in scope, yet also try to have the loudest voice for the membership to be able to work on legislation. There's actually two parts to it. There's the legislative part, and there's also the resolution process, the voice from the delegate assembly floor, you know, to the WASB legislator. So, there's, you know, there's two different processes, the submitting of the resolutions, fine tuning them through committee, but then, the only authority comes at, on the delegate assembly floor from WASB, so.
Okay, well, and you know, maybe I was sleeping, but in the six years I've been on the board, I don't recall our board ever bringing them.
Mary Jo, if I could speak just a moment before, in the past, and I think your initial question perhaps wasn't answered, how do we get those resolutions? Where do they come? And it's the boards that do it. And Wauwatosa has submitted resolutions in my tenure on the board, we have done that. So, it's the board combined putting forth. If they see an issue that they would like to have, then we would form that and submit it. And whoever the delegate is, has, will receive those papers and get them. Just to speak to, we might want to talk about the, some of the things that are going on with finances.
Yeah, and like I say, if everybody else is interested in participating, that's fine, I don't see it as being very useful, but that's me.
Well, safety is another issue. I don't know if we do, at the state level, we can do enough with that. But those are just some thoughts. I think that's what your first question was.
Yeah.
How do they get to the resolutions committee?
Right. And I, again, since I've been on the board, we haven't ever developed any to send. And yet, you know, people are voting on them, so. And I, the, I guess the reason I talk about it is, is how close, or, you know, the issues that came up with changes to open enrollment, that would have affected us so negatively last year, had they been passed. So, you know, we're getting into a climate where, just like we did our budget and, and our programming and so on, that I think we're going to have to rely more and more on ourselves, and, you know, the work that we can do and the people that we can put in place. So, thank you.
Michael?
Well, you know, I probably wasn't very clear before. To my thinking, now, it is true at the state convention that amendments can come from the floor, but it is a difficult road to take. The, the real impact, or the real ability to shape and, and present resolutions are in this, in this committee. And, and so, as Mrs. Weber said, local school boards present or submit proposals, something this board has not done since I've been on the board. But obviously, this board in the past is, as Mrs. Weber said, you know, we have been more active. So, if we wish to influence the resolutions that are passed by the WASB, the place to do it, I believe, is in this committee, if, if we wish to. Because once it comes to the floor, it's either up or down, very few changes, and most of the things are passed. Okay, now, that said, whoever we send to the state convention, I also believe it is helpful if that person and the person on this committee is the same person. Because I know, you know, Sharon had been on this committee last year, and she knew a lot of the context about some of these things, where afterwards I asked you, "Well, what was, what was that about? You know, why were they doing that?" And, and you knew sort of the backstory to the whole thing. And that, that, that's, it, it makes it a more productive experience, I think, if you know more about what's going on and why it's there. So, now, if, if this were to be Mrs. Mufeld, I would ask that, that Mrs. Mufeld not accept the delegate role from CISA to go to WASB. So, you don't have to sit there, which vote, who am I voting for on this vote, you know, that. I wouldn't want to be in that spot, I don't think that's a good idea.
I don't think that's allowed. I don't think she could even do whole vote positions.
Well, and we didn't, it didn't come to pass that way last year, but just, just what I'm saying, if, I believe it's helpful if, who, if we send somebody for this committee, that that, it be understood that that person be the state delegate, so that it's the same person. Because I think that's helpful to, to the state delegate, to have had this background. And, and if that's the case, if, if, if we decide that it is to be Mrs. Mufeld, then she'll know that, you know, she's going to be our WASB state delegate, and then she, she'll get to, you know, have early notice on our feelings about whether she could be the CISA delegate as well. And similarly, we should coordinate that with our legislative activity that the vice president does in my role, and with the M A T C board voting role, so that we're presenting the same, a consistent message in these four places, and that we staff it in a way that is the, you know, the most effective. But definitely, I think if, if we ask Sharon to do this board committee role, I believe then she should be the, the state representative as well. It just makes sense that we have that, that continuity, to me, anyway.
Dr. Erdl, and please, board members, I would like your input. You are working on, with Mrs. Guanti, setting a date for in-service. Is this a subject that we could put on the in-service? If we are truly interested in considering submitting a resolution, or even talking about it, this, could we have time on it in-service, or, I don't know what you, how your timeline is?
At this time, I would suggest not.
Okay.
Because I think there's some other issues that need to be addressed for that in-service to start moving forward into next year. But I mean, it certainly could be on a future agenda for a board meeting if one, if you want to discuss it. But I think the timeline for this, I think WASB, if I understand correctly, wants to know soon which way we're going to go with it.
Well, only so that if we are not interested, then we can.
Give someone else.
Yeah, they can notify, you know, another district and ask for another school board member to serve, so. But if the board is open to having Wauwatosa serve again, then I could, you know, or the superintendent, or Mrs. Weber, you could let Mr. Long know that, that we are interested, we just haven't picked a person yet. So, I mean, we could do it that way, if no one has any objections.
Board members, please give me, yes, may I finish? Please, give me what you would like, how you would like to handle this. Mr. Meyer?
Well, I, I think we need to establish the principle with WASB, that the startup communications go through the board president. So, I believe it should be either, that it should, it should be the president who replies to this request.
I'm going to ask Dr. Erdl to take care of that.
And, and then, if, if, you know, Mrs. Mufeld wishes to do this and has the time, I believe we should, I, I think then it should be the same person as the state convention representative, and that it, it should be, that person should be exclusively and only representing the Wauwatosa School District at that convention.
Okay, board members, comment? Yes, Mr. Kona?
I just need a couple of points of clarification while I'm thinking of this. Mrs. Mufeld, this is something that you would like to do, if, since it's been offered to you, if the board agrees that we would like representation in this committee?
Yes, I think that I could provide some continuity. Part of the reason that WASB wants to school, you know.
Two years.
Two, two years in a row, is because the first year, you're new, the second year, you have a little bit more experience, and then the boards, and the regions transition like that. It, it does make it, does, does make it a little more productive, let's put it that way.
And do you have a WASB role as a CISA One delegate?
No.
In addition to this?
No. The CISA One Board of Control appoints a delegate every year, just like the Wauwatosa School Board does. And, and I have served in that role in the past, but that doesn't mean this year they'll ask me to do that. And I wouldn't be able to do that if I was a Wauwatosa delegate, which has also happened in the past, where I've been a, a Wauwatosa delegate and had to say, "I can't be the CISA One delegate." So, that has also happened. No, you cannot do both.
So, I guess my conclusion would be, I think if board members are concerned about the influence of WASB, or representing Wauwatosa's interests, that it's useful to have someone on this committee. And if Sharon is willing to do that, since she did it in the past, I, I would agree with that. I found her presentations in the past about this process very informative and helpful as we discussed the resolutions when they actually came before the, the convention. So, I don't have a problem moving forward with this, with Mrs. Mufeld being the representative. And it seems to me that there are safeguards in place as far as being a CISA One delegate or Wauwatosa delegate, so that should take care of itself.
Is there any further comment? I think we can move forward, if I'm hearing every, Sharon, would you like to accept this for the next, this year, for the policies and resolutions?
Uh, yes.
Can we move ahead with that?
I think it needs to be voted on by the.
Okay. May we have that on the next board meeting then, please? Yes.
I, is, what do you all think about when Mrs. Mufeld does this? If the next board meeting after every one of these committee meetings, that you report to us and tell us, like, what happened? So, I, I just seem to think other school boards are much more engaged in being aware of these activities. And we have a habit of sending our board members off, and we don't keep track of them. Nobody asked me really what I did at the M A T C board meeting last spring, and, at least in a formal board meeting. So, I think that's good if we have the feedback loop, so you, you can come and get our input, and that way, you're more effective there, because, you know, you have this aura about having spoken for all seven, you know, with them, you know, it, it, just trying to help you, you know, have as much oomph as you can in there, because we need you to.
Right, and again, just to point out that this Policy and Resolutions Committee is a regional, Region 15, and there are other districts in Region 15. Wauwatosa, I think, is a very unique suburban school district, and can offer a lot of input as a lot of the other school districts in the other regions. Some are rural, some are urban. And so, there might be other school boards that request me to come, and speak to them too after some of these meetings. So, if you're comfortable with me doing that too. I don't know that they will, but.
Well, well, I just think it means we need you to have more of a role in our, in our board meeting to communicate with us and exchange information with us about what we're doing, you know, at least for our education. So, we're not all in, not in the, yeah, I just think it's useful for us to collaborate.
Yeah, I think it's good. There'll be, I will let you know the dates of the meetings. There's a date in October, a date in November, and then also just prior to the delegate assembly, and then at, at the delegate assembly. So, I think October and late November.
Yes, Jo?
One other question, just for clarification from you, for the function of this policy and resolution. and Resolution Committee, do you actually discuss the resolutions from a policy perspective, or do you just analyze and make sure they're written appropriately and they don't conflict with one another as far as what they're, they seem to do? For example, you don't accept or turn down policies based on opinions of the board members as to whether this reflects goals of WASB or not, or do you just accept them all as long as they're written appropriately and not conflicting with one another?
Well, there is some fine tuning, because in the example of the open enrollment, there were multiple school districts that submitted those resolutions. So, the, so there is some summary work being done, and I do have the papers here with me tonight on our working documents from last year's committee, if, you know, any board members are interested in seeing those. But to answer your question, they're, with input from the board members at the table and the WASB administration, they do draft a resolution that's more general, based on school district submittals, if, in the case that there would be multiple submittals. If there are, during the initial work group in October, as another example, if the general group agrees that the resolution already exists in the resolution book, they might turn that down, and they will then notify the school district that submitted that resolution that they have turned it down. Does that answer your question?
Yes. So, if I understand correctly, the true vote on the up or down merit occurs at the convention, not in this committee?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, right, the final say is always at the delegate assembly, and there have been, in the case of last year, where there was a resolution that the committee advanced, which was completely changed, and was successfully passed. So.
Sharon, you might also want to mention the rationale that's included with each resolution.
Yes. The, the adminis, the administration of WASB does provide rationale, does provide financial information, and, you know, quite in-depth analysis of the submittals.
Okay.
And why or why not.
So, there's a good opportunity for exchange, and there is a meeting the night preceding the delegate meeting, so that all the resolutions are reviewed at that time, and it's also a time, I think, when new resolutions can be put forward, and it's explained the process.
Yes. Yes, you can, you need a two-thirds majority vote to enter that, and there have been some submitted at delegate assemblies. I have not served.
It's not the easiest one to get passed, though.
Right. I have not served where that has been successful, but that has happened. Or when school districts have submitted resolutions past the deadline date, that is another, that's another way.
Any further comments or questions? We have, if we are going to vote on this, we have a one meeting in July, July, I believe it's the 17th or the 19th, so this would need to wait until that time, is that a?
No, we can do it at the next board meeting, June 27th.
Do we have one? Okay.
Question, please.
Yes. That would be time enough then, wouldn't it? June 27th, and, okay, excuse me.
Do we wish to word this resolution that it also names Mrs. Muufeld as the state convention delegate at the same time, so we can just get it all done?
I would recommend yes. Does it make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. There is no objection?
Thank you. That was a lively discussion. I'm very excited that our board is.
I think it was a learning expression too, Sharon, so that's good. Okay. Have we covered, yes, I believe we have covered each one. Is there any community comment once more on either of the three items that were presented? Seeing none, is there any community comment on any non-agenda item at this time?
Ilya Potkonyak, 8905 Jackson Park Boulevard. One of the agenda items is, that's listed, is the contract with the secretarial staff, and it says there's a grievance, I was kind of confused by that, in the agenda on the website. You, I know this is only for comment, but I guess there's a grievance because they were, from what I understand, they were threatened to be outsourced. I'm just wondering, is that a typical negotiating tactic, to say, accept these cuts or lose your, or be outsourced? Doesn't have to be answered, just a comment.
Dr. Erdl or Mr. Sharon, would you wish to comment?
No, I'm not going to comment. If you'd like to discuss it with Mr. Chanan afterward, you certainly can.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I have, there, we do have in our packet a, a list of salary comparables for these particular functions compared to the private sector, if that would be helpful as well. You know, I'm sure we can provide that, that to anyone.
At this time, there, an order for German would be in order.
They're moved.
Mary Jo?
Yep.
And Sharon? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Deroz?
Hi.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muufeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?